Ladies and gentlemen, I'm John Hardesty from Hudson County View. Thanks for joining us for the Hudson Media Group's ongoing coverage and debates in Hoboken Council races. Today, we're going to be doing the Sixth Ward, and we're joined with incumbent Jen Giattino and challenger Frank Rosner. So, we are going to get underway. We've got a whole hour of action for you, so let's not delay. Let's get on with the show. So, let's get to the podium, folks.
Nice to see you.
You too.
Good luck.
All right, so first, we're just going to go with an introduction, so you guys both have approximately a minute to just introduce yourselves to the audience and tell us why you're running for the Sixth Ward.
Am I first?
Yes, if we could start with our council president.
I've lived in Hoboken 22 years. I am raising three teenage boys. I have the privilege of being married to the most supportive man, Joseph Giattino. One of the things I get the most joy from is solving problems, and I've shown that over the past eight years. If you do have a problem, even if you don't come to me, sometimes I seek you out. I do whatever I can to solve for that. I worked in finance for most of my adult life, and that gives me the unique ability to fully understand and grasp the city's finances and budgeting. The younger part of my adult life, I was a ballet dancer, which gives me a great understanding of discipline and how important it is in life. That's Jen Giattino in a nutshell.
All right, thanks, council president. Frank, so tell us why you're vying for the seat.
Well, hi. My name's Frank Rosner, and I've been in Hoboken, living in Hoboken for 40 years. Kind of grew up in Hudson County, in Union City and North Bergen, but have been planted in Hoboken for 40 years. I've seen a lot of changes in this city, in this big little city called Hoboken, over the course of time, and I don't think I've ever seen the city so divided as it is now. Reason why I'm running is to unite the city so that all factions, all residents, can benefit from what the council people do and try to put forth policies that will benefit the vast majority of people. You're not going to be able to make everyone happy all the time, but it's much better than having everyone mad at you all the time, and I want to run to unite the city. And I'm married to a wonderful woman named Debbie. I have two daughters, one who's currently in Japan studying Japanese at the Tupper University Tokyo campus, and my older one is coding, and she also works at Empire Coffee as a barista. That's me in a nutshell.
Thank you, Frank. So Frank, we'll start with you with the first question. So, we're going to start off nice and easy, so just could you tell our audience today why you think you're the best candidate for the job? Give us one or two campaign staples that you think makes you stand out from the other candidates in the race.
I think what makes me stand out as a candidate, I'm kind of a uniter. Basically, going back to my introduction, I've really not seen the city ever this divided. It's really exceedingly divided, in my opinion. What I'd like to do is unite the residents of the city through the council to create policies and propose the execution of those policies that will benefit the residents. There's a lot going on, obviously, the scooters, protected bike lanes, redevelopment, real, real density, and I'd like to address that as well if I'm elected to the council.
Very good. And council president, same question for you.
It's funny that we're talking about uniting, because I do think that's one of my best qualities. I've been on the council for eight years. Four of them, I have been council president, three council vice president, elected by my peers. I do make every effort that I can to build consensus on the council. I set up the committees in a way that gives more people on the council a voice. Prior to me being council president, it was typically, the subcommittees were made up typically of whoever the council majority was at the time, but I took every effort to ensure that everyone on the council participated in all the subcommittees. And I know there, you know, I'm listening about perception, about not getting along, but the council votes 9-0 somewhere between 80 and 90% of the time. I think a lot of it is just perception that a few people are putting out there. I don't think it's the majority of people.
All right, very good, council president. So, the next question is, candidate Rosner talked about responsible development, so let's talk about that for a second. So, as far as responsible development in the Sixth Ward, I mean, we're seeing throughout the cities these multi-story towers getting approved and going up at a rate that I don't think has been seen in at least a few decades. So, in your eyes, what do you think is the definition of responsible development, and how can we see that trend continue for at least the next four years?
Well, if you actually look at the city, if you go from, let's say, 11th Street, and you look up from up north to that section just by the 14th Street viaduct, that area is so dense, and there's, it's like a city unto its own. In fact, Hoboken is the only city I'm aware of that has kind of an uptown, a midtown, and a downtown. And in some cases, I know people uptown that barely go past 6th or 7th Street. It's kind of weird, and the whole city is just a square mile. That's what I mean about uniting everyone, and the density is just so high up there. I really don't want it to come down to, you know, past 6th, 7th, 8th, 9th Street, that whole area, whether it's the Sixth Ward or the city itself. And there's also that yards development that's coming up with New Jersey Transit. So, we're really going to need to focus and address that. That kind of redevelopment, I don't think, is worthy of Hoboken and the taste of the city. Want to keep as much of the taste of the city as possible without overdevelopment or sky-high stuff that's going up.
So, as far as the yards redevelopment project, Frank, it's safe to say that if you were on the council, you would not, that's not something you would approve?
I probably wouldn't approve it. I'd have to see what there's new plans are. I know there's something going on now. I think they tabled it at the last council meeting. It really has to look at, there's a lot of scrutiny that has to go on before that any kind of okays or approvals or variances are made.
Very good. Council president?
I have to agree completely with Frank about the L-Cor redevelopment plan. It was put before the council two meetings ago for first reading, and then went to the planning board, and I was the one that pushed to have it tabled, because the residents of Hoboken were not informed about this at all. There was no NICSIL alert. There was, you know, no push from the administration to make sure that the public knew about this. This plan took a building that was 200 feet tall and increased it by 50% to 300 feet without even notice to the public. The one notice we did get after the fact was that the plan is actually small, the amended plan is actually smaller, which is false, because they don't mention that the middle area, they said it's a million, a million square feet smaller. Well, the middle section of it where the wall for rebuild by design is going has future development of 944,000 square feet, the ability to develop 944,000 square feet. So, not only are we making a building 100 feet taller, and when I say "we," I'm not doing it, we're allowing in the future for the developer to build almost a million square feet more. So, there's no reduction in square footage, and we all know that if you give a developer the ability to do this, even though it says potential square footage in the future, it's going to happen.
So, similar follow-up to what I asked Frank. So, in the event that this is on the agenda on October 16th, that council meeting, will you be voting no on this?
I'm actually trying to keep it off the agenda, because we're having a public meeting, which also, at the last council meeting, I said we have to have a public meeting prior to voting on this. We're having the public meeting the day before, and that's not nearly enough time to make any kind of decision and really understand what the public wants.
All right, very good. So, you mentioned that rebuild by design, so let's talk a little bit about that. Obviously, this is a project that's many years in the making. Of course, this is the flood preventative plan in Hoboken, something started by the Zimmer administration. I think most would call this one of her proudest achievements, and, you know, it's still ongoing, a big one, $230 million. This is partners of the city, in the state, and on the federal level. So, if you continue to serve, or if you're elected to the council, how would you ensure that this project continues to move forward smoothly without ever losing any funding and making any of this on the backs of the taxpayers in Hoboken?
For me?
Yes, please.
Well, it is moving forward. It's already in the process of moving forward. I flooded during Sandy, so I completely understand the importance of this, and I can't think of any resident that isn't for rebuild by design. I do have concerns about funding in the future, not so much funding of the build-out of it, but funding the maintenance aspect of it. How are we going to pay to maintain it? I did actually meet with the mayor recently, and we talked about that, and he's looking into ways to get state funding specifically for the maintenance aspect of it. But no matter what, it does have to happen. We cannot have another Sandy in Hoboken. The next one, and many people were devastated by this one, who knows what happens with the next one.
Very good. Frank?
Yeah, I'm all for the rebuild by design, specifically for the resiliency part. I too flooded in Hurricane Sandy. We had about seven feet of water and lost a lot of sentimental stuff, but fortunately, it was just sentimental stuff. It's not something I'm going to take with me when I'm gone. Yes, I am for the rebuild by design. I think we need to investigate some aspects of it for some changes. The southwest park, I'm for that, the green, and all, it should be made so that it's environmentally helpful for the town, retains the water, prevents another Hurricane Sandy flooding like we had, but to make it more compatible for other uses, not just the baseland and the greenery and all that stuff. It has to, it has to be amenable to all uses, and I think we need to address that to make sure that that happens. Taxpayer money, we need to save some money there as well. I'll give you an example, just real quick, on the protected bike lanes, especially on Washington Street. First of all, those green lines that are the bike lanes, when it's wet, it's slippery, and that needs to be addressed, I believe. Potholes need to be addressed. It's all about quality of life when you talk about resiliency in storms and flooding. It all comes into one point, which is quality of life, and all of that has to be addressed.
All right, very good. Council president, you went a little bit into the bike lane aspect of this. I'm just curious if you'd had anything to say on that specific issue.
On bike lanes?
Yeah.
I am for protected bike lanes. It has to be on the right streets, and it has to be with the support of the residents. I don't think that you can just say we're, you know, we're going to put a protected bike lane on Willow and not have conversations with the residents. It's all about building community trust, building community consensus. That's something, when we redesigned Washington Street, that I worked really hard to get community consensus on. I do agree about the slipperiness of the green. I don't know about on a bicycle, but definitely on foot, I've walked over them, and they are slippery, as well as the red pads on corners. Can I just, rebuild by design?
Yeah.
The end design has already been done, and it's actually quite beautiful. I'm excited to see, like, what it's going to do. It's not, it's not just a barrier. It will be a whole entire park that will take place in the north end of town. It's something much needed up there. It's on the waterfront. It goes, it's consistent with having a park along our entire waterfront. I think this project is a really exciting project for Hoboken.
All right, just very quickly, for those that are tuning in live, you can send us a question right here on Facebook. It's facebook.com/HudsonMediaGroup. So, just something for, again, those that are tuning in live. With that, we're going to keep on moving right along here, so let's go with another, of course, Six Word specific question. So, I'm going to talk to you guys about what's going on, the relationship between the city of Hoboken and the Stevens Institute of Technology. So, candidate Rosner, as you know, the Stevens Institute of Technology alleged in a lawsuit over the summer that they're being targeted by the city's new temporary no-parking ordinance. You know, they're claiming that they're being used to extract, quote-unquote, "$4 million" from the school to go towards their new university center project. You know, they feel that they shouldn't have to pay these fees, and the city is claiming that they're going to lose out on millions of dollars if they don't, which I think is pretty, pretty easy to prove. But either way, what do you think is the most amicable way to end this dispute here in court and then make sure that there's still a healthy relationship between Stevens and the city while, of course, not shortchanging these revenues so that, again, you know, this isn't something that the taxpayer ends up having to foot the bill on?
Well, I think Stevens has benefited from Hoboken, and Hoboken has benefited from Stevens. It's a two-way street. Perhaps it's a bit onerous, the, that revenue that we're talking about, that might be re-investigated or re-looked at. There's a possibility of that. There's an amenable sequence of events that we can come to through negotiation, and certainly we need to address that with President Favardin, and the council, and the city, and the mayor. We need to get everybody involved so that it's fair. Real simple. Make it fair.
All right, and Jen, what do you think?
So, Stevens, before I was on the council, I actually think Stevens and the Sixth Ward in particular had a horrible relationship, and I worked really, really hard with President Favardin to change that. Stevens gives a lot back to the community. Their campus is open to everyone. It used to feel as if you weren't allowed on there. I even have one ironic thing, that I was meeting with the Stevens professor one day for lunch, and I brought my dog up there, and as a security guard was walking towards me, I was certain that they were going to tell me, "No dogs allowed," but instead, they suggested I come in the morning, and I could let my dog off-leash. So, I think the relationship has changed. As to the parking spots, Stevens reached out to me and told me they were going to be taking 62 spots on Sinatra Drive for a period of three years, and it was going to cost them a little over $4 million. And I said, like I always do, "There's got to be a better solution." So, I reached out to Director Sharp, and Lieutenant Petrazino, and Sergeant Montanez. Sergeant Montanez is Office of Emergency Management, and Lieutenant Petrazino is in charge of traffic. The four of us went and met with Stevens, and I said, "For me, what I care about is my residents having the 62 spots. That's what's important to me. I'm sure if you could figure out a way to give us 62 spots and put some sort of cherry on top of that, that would be a solution that we could all get behind." So, a few days later, they got back. We went back to a meeting with them. They offered us 62 spots for three years, 24/7, that we could do whatever we want with them. We could meter them, we could make it resident-only, we could make it visitor-only, split it up. And because these spots don't currently exist, the public wouldn't be upset if we tried out different kind of pilot programs, maybe like weekly parking, or two-week parking, or four-day parking, lots of different options, 24-hour parking. And for the cherry, they said you can have 50 of those spots for additional 20 years after to continue to do whatever you want with. So, we would have the 62 spots back on the street and 20 spots. The council actually voted 8-0 on it. Councilwoman Falco had to abstain because she works at Stevens. It was an ADO vote, and the mayor didn't sign the agreement. He emailed me and said that, I believe, the city's not a corporate charity, and he doesn't think it was in the best interest of Hoboken. For me, the revenue wasn't what I was looking for. I was just looking for my residents to have those 62 spots that they were losing.
Very good. So, you said quite a bit on that, Frank. I'm assuming you have some sort of follow-up.
Well, actually, I agree with Jen on that. It appears that our mayor is relatively disingenuous on this subject. I agree with Jen wholeheartedly. If we get the 62 spots and then we get 50 for another 20 years, why would that be a bad thing? That the city's not a charitable institution, that just seems to be a very, very bad line to put out there.
All right, so we do have one resident question that I would like to pose to you. So, this is coming from Sherif Alik, and her question involves building demolition. She says, "Lots of building demolition going on in the Sixth Ward. Any thoughts on stemming the tide?" Of course, meaning curbing this practice. Yes, go ahead.
There's one that they're looking to demo right now on Third and Bloomfield, which a friend used to live in. But there is thought about expanding the historic district, and at the last council meeting, it was expanding it on Bloomfield and Castle Point Terrace, but there's a second part to that, which is expanding it in the R1 area, and that would give protections. We did, we did create a demolition ordinance, which does force these people to go to historic preservation now, which has saved a few, and I mean a few, buildings. But property owners know that they have the right to knock them down if they're not in a historic district, and I am completely supportive of it. It doesn't, the ordinance, expanding it, wouldn't mean that you couldn't do whatever you wanted inside your home, but the facade of the homes, I mean, that's the face of Hoboken. When you walk down the streets of Hoboken, and in particular in the Sixth Ward, there's a connection between you on the sidewalk and the person in their building, and you can see it, like Frank said, uptown in the northwest part of town, you don't have that. And it's very important to me that the Sixth Ward keeps that connection between someone on the sidewalk and the building. It's really unique, and it's actually what I love so much about living in the Sixth Ward.
All right, excellent. Frank?
Yeah, Sherif, renovations are renovations, demolitions are demolitions. I don't see too many demolitions. All I've seen are renovations. There's actually one that occurred approximately seven months ago, directly across from where I live. It was clean, it was fine, they did it quick, they cleaned up, there was no mess. You know, and as far as preserving the feel of Hoboken, I agree with Jen on that part. If it's not a preservation district or a preserved building under the preservation law, then, you know, you have every right to do what you want to on the inside, but we should take a case-by-case basis on how that looks on the outside, what the sidewalks are like, all that that maintains Hoboken, the charm, and everything about Hoboken that made people come when it started to fly off the charts in the mid-'70s.
Very good, Frank. So, I wanted to also touch on something that we've heard a lot from the Balla candidates, the Balla team, I should say, that five-person slate, talking about they want a good, clean election, which is kind of an oxymoron in Hoboken, but that's here and there, I suppose. So, nevertheless, they're talking about, "We're not going to campaign at the housing authority buildings. We're only going to do what is allowed by pay-to-play, what is allowed by New Jersey Election Law Enforcement Commission." So, any thoughts from you guys about their stance on those things and, you know, campaign-related issues, finances?
I actually had an email conversation with John Sanford, the vice president of HHA.
James Sanford.
I'm sorry?
That's James Sanford.
Oh, James Sanford, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
And we had an email exchange, and I read all those five points. There's two of them I agreed with. The one that really I took issue with was not campaigning on HHA grounds, or if there's sponsors, or something's going on that's being sponsored by the HHA. You know, as far as the United States of America Constitution is in effect, that's a ridiculous pledge to say yes to, number one. Number two, having said that, you know, you're not going to take money from Rea for all the vote by, the votes that he paid for allegedly, I've never taken money at all from anyone. So, I don't know if that makes me immune, but, so I didn't agree with that either. There were two items I signed yes for, and I did sign on it, and, you know, I just took issue with, there were some caveats there that I had told them I don't agree with. There's no basis in sound legal fact that anyone would sign that part of the agreement. Why?
Fair enough, Frank. And as far as the pay-to-play goes, any take on that?
Pay-to-play, I announced very, in the very beginning in July, when I first announced that I was running for the Sixth Ward council seat, I'm not taking any development money. I'm not taking any PACs money. It's all friends, neighbors, small donations. In fact, I just filed my A1, which is under 5100 for the ELEC committee, and that's basically it on that side. That's enough to know that I'm not campaigning actively for money.
All right.
It's grassroots, it's all a grassroots effort, John.
Understood, Frank. And Jen?
I'm campaigning for money. Jen Giattino for the Sixth Ward, 216 7th Street, Hoboken, New Jersey. Please send a check. Of course, of course, nothing makes me happier than when a resident sends you money. It's the best feeling in the world, actually, that someone has that much faith in you. Pay-to-play, I follow the pay-to-play laws. I always have followed the pay-to-play laws. I actually voted on them in 2011. I know that this is, they're trying to make this into something bigger than what it really is politically. It just, it's, you know, this little political soundbite that they can throw out there, but the reality is, you send out a NICSIL alert about a non-binding, the council not showing up to vote on a non-binding resolution. It's an ordinance that we already have on our books, and it should be, if the mayor or the administration has an issue with how it's being enforced, I think it's his staff that he needs to be talking to, not the council voting on it. NICSIL alerts should be used for things like the L-Cor redevelopment and letting our public, you know, our residents know the important things, the things that are going on in Hoboken, the things that are going to change their lives forever. That's what NICSIL should be used for.
If I could just follow up on that, I'm
Absolutely.
I'm not normally a controversial guy. I, I'm kind of curious, though, that Mr. Sanford, when he put out those five bullets, I wonder where that came from, whether it's a personal thing that he wants to put forth, or if it's coming from the Balla campaign? I don't know. I just, I'm kind of curious about that. That's all.
That's certainly a fair assertion to make. I mean, I guess we'll have to ask him, so
Just throwing it out there, Jen.
A good one to, a good one to pose, for sure. So, on a serious note, though, we, you guys probably know that just a few hours ago this morning, another person pled guilty to vote by mail fraud in connection to the 2015 municipal elections, that Mr. William Rojas, he admitted that he participated in a scheme that violated the Travel Act, specifically people getting paid $50 for their votes. So, just from your respective campaigns, like, what are you doing to ensure that, you know, this is as clean of a fight as you could hope it to be in that respect?
To me?
Sure.
Again, I just filed my A1, which is $5,100 and under, so you don't have to keep filing. There's no way I will be able to pay any volunteers. It's strictly volunteers. If they come out, I have a small cadre of people I've been working with to get the word out. To have come this long, this long on the way to get on the ballot, I've really spent not much money at all, and if that helps me to get the word out, it's all legwork, it's all volunteer work. Again, a small cadre of volunteers, and between now and Election Day, we're going to just speed it up and do what we can.
Quick follow-up for you, if you don't mind. So, what's your take on the pay-to-play resolution that has been introduced by the administration?
You know, we already have a pay-to-play law, and if you abide by that, that's fine. There's, there's nothing additional. It's, it's, it's fine. There's nothing additional that needs to be amended, or added, or taken away. It works.
Very good. Okay, council president?
I forgot your original question, I'm sorry.
The original question was just in light of this latest guilty plea, just how was your campaign
Yes, I'm good.
Okay.
So, interestingly, the reason I got into Hoboken politics was specifically this issue. It was after Mayor Zimmer ran against Beth Mason and Peter Camarano, and I was so dumbfounded that they could find a box of vote-by-mails under a desk
I remember.
And then, and then count them. So, I took the initiative to go down to the Board of Elections and actually go through all the vote-by-mails, and what I was seeing, I found it really hard to believe that I actually lived in a country that things like this were happening. So, I took it upon myself to write the Attorney General a letter telling him how I felt like I lived in a third-world country, and I couldn't believe this wasn't going to be investigated. And then, in 2011, I hosted a fundraiser for Renee Steinhegan to be the attorney to fight against this, and luckily, we're finally at a spot where I think Hoboken's vote-by-mail days are over.
Okay, very good. So, on a broader, on a broader note, I just wanted to talk to you guys about, you know, partnerships throughout the county. Specifically, I just wanted to ask, are there any shared services or any other public-private partnerships that you guys think that the city could either improve on or needs to actually embark on for a first time that you think would be beneficial for not only the Sixth Ward, but perhaps the city as a whole? And we can start with Jen this time.
So, the questions about working better with the county and what we can get from them?
Essentially.
Yeah. I recently secured $250,000 for two dog runs from the Hudson County Open Space Trust Fund, for Steve, both in the Sixth Ward, for Stevens Park and for Church Club Park, my personal favorite dog run. I have a really, really good working relationship with the county. I find that when I have an issue on a county road, whether it's, I can't tell you how many, I can't, I don't even think I can count how many stop signs I've had put in on county roads. They're extremely responsive. I've had issues with trees on county roads. I've had issues with dumpsters on county roads, and they get back, they get back to you very quickly and look to solve for the problem. There's always more ways we can get money from the county, and we should do everything we can to get as much money from the county, because we pay a lot of county taxes. First year, though, ever, was this year, that they went, Hoboken's share went down, but there's always ways that I would be looking to get more from the county.
All right, great. Frank?
There are far more ways, I believe, that we can investigate to get more money from the county based on the money we put in by taxes. the county, based on the money we put in by taxes. You know, you can put in stop signs, you can put in whatever you want, as Jen said, but stop signs don't fix potholes. Clinton is a, I'm sorry, Willow, the street I live on, is a county road. As long as I've been in Hoboken, I don't ever remember, I think it was paved once. Same thing with Clinton, it's, it's rough, you know, I commute to New York every day. That bus is really something else. I mean, I, I would imagine that, you know, the percentage of Hobokenites with kidney stones after that ride were just, it's incredible, and that really has to be addressed. That is, that is part and parcel of what we call the quality of life. I, I see the bump outs, I see the little garden areas that they're making, I mean, it's great, you know, this whole Vision Zero that, that they want, I'm alluding to that as well. I get it, I get it, but it all takes money, and we need to get enough money back, based on the amount of money we're putting in. And I know Hoboken is considered a wealthy town, and it is, but it's not all wealthy, there are certain sections of wealth. There's other sections that are middle-class, if there's any middle-class left at all. I guess I'm lower-middle-class at this point, I'll attest to that. But there's so much more money that we could be getting, and there's so much partnerships that we can do together to make that happen, and we really need to make that happen. We really have to look at it very, we really got to scrutinize it very carefully.
What do you think an example of some new partnerships would be that you would like to embark on if you were elected?
Sure. I mean, specifically with the county?
Anybody, whether it's private, whether it's public, you know, anybody.
Public, private?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you could, look, I've been a sales guy for most of my life in corporate America, and I don't think there's any reason why we can't reach out to some corporations, like, maybe name the Southwest Park, like JP Morgan Park, if you want, you know? And we can get, we can get things like that going, too, as well as, I mean, they name parks, why can't we name lanes? Why can't we name parking spots? Just think about how we can produce additional revenue without putting the burden on the taxpayers.
Sure. And Jen, anything on that?
Frank brought up briefly the different, the different economic, the economic diversity in Hoboken, and I do think that goes back to teardowns, and it's something people don't think about. When you take a building, that's a four-unit building, and you tear it down and turn it into a one, you're losing four people that could afford to live in Hoboken, and now we're being displaced from Hoboken. That's another reason that, that teardowns, it's another way teardowns are affecting Hoboken in a negative way. So, I think it's important that we really think about that as well, moving forward.
Okay. So, you both alluded to some quality-of-life issues in the Sixth Ward and across Hoboken. So, if you had to identify what the most pressing quality-of-life issue is of the Sixth Ward, what is it, and how would you go about addressing it if either re-elected or elected for the first time? Jen, you could start off.
So, I would say about six years ago, the most pressing issue was cleanliness, Bloomfield Street, the condition of Bloomfield Street, and actually, not just the Sixth Ward, but Bloomfield Street from end to end. Park maintenance, over the past year and a half, park maintenance has changed drastically. I work really well with Jen Gonzalez, she, if I put in a request, it's unbelievable how fast she's on it. I've been, prior to that, I'd been trying to get grass in Church Square Park, I met with her, we now have two quadrants that actually have green grass growing. I wanted all the shrubs to be cut even, I spoke with her about that, all our shrubs are cut now, the gazebo was just redone, the bathrooms were just repainted. Stevens Park, we did a lot of work on the walkways, so I'm very happy with where the parks are going, under her leadership and my requesting. Bloomfield Street, I had paved from end to end, not personally, but requested for it to be paved. I think that was five years ago, the city only wanted to do one section of it, which actually was just the Sixth Ward section, because at the time, the ward members were allowed to put in their request for, you know, what they wanted to be repaved, and I said, there's, I don't see the point of just do, the road's a disaster, what's the point of just doing one section? Washington Street was always a huge topic, but interestingly, I think that a lot of the big asks have been done. There's, I mean, development is now an issue, and it's not just the Sixth Ward, but the implications of development in the North End, and how that impacts us and our infrastructure, and what that does to bus, bus rides, and the PATH station, you know, at what point is it too much capacity? So, it's, it's really much broader now. I know for my, you know, the residents that I deal with on a daily basis, the Sixth Ward is so unique because we have, we're such a smaller scale, it's a really tight-knit community, it really makes, like, it's my dream come true, you know? We live in a village, we all have our part. I think it's just day-to-day things, and I have the ability to walk the Sixth Ward day in and day out, and take pictures of a pothole, or take pictures of a bike chained up somewhere, and harass and harass and harass until whatever the issue is, is taken care of.
All right. And Frank?
I think if you take care of the details, the rest kind of falls into place, because then the bigger picture becomes part of the focus from the details. Look, you know, parks, parks need to be maintained, obviously. Church Square Park is far more better than it's been before, I'll agree with that. I'd like to be specific about one instance, just for parks in general.
Please do.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead, yes, please do.
The, the recent Union Dry Dock, where they also want to build a park, and I'm all for eminent domain in that specific area. Personally, it doesn't matter to me if you build a park there or not, as long as there's a contiguous walkway. Maybe we shouldn't build a park there, maybe we should save the money, and then upgrade all our parks. We should investigate a community pool, additional recreation areas. I know there's something going up, something going on with the Old Y up, uptown on Washington Street. So, we need to investigate that, again, quality of life, you know? Recreation, parks, upgrades. That's why I say, I don't know if we necessarily need a park by the waterfront, where the Union Dry Dock is, but we could use that money for that, what they want to build there as a park, to upgrade all the existing parks that we have. And I know Columbus Park is being upgraded now, so...
So, how do you think you did Dry Dock, that issue should be settled or remedied?
Well, I believe they, the city placed a bid on it already. I'm a little worried about the last council meeting where I was at, about possible, you know, remediation, if we find that, so it might, it might balloon into some, some big money. But the, I've been with Fund for a Better Waterfront since I've lived in Hoboken, and most of that waterfront that we have, in fact, all of that waterfront we have is due to Ron Heine and FBW. Otherwise, I think there'd be skyscrapers all along the waterfront. What we have now, we should finish up with a contiguous walkway, and then do what we have to do to get it done. That's a, that's a generational legacy that we're all going to leave everyone.
Okay. Anything on that, Jen?
I drank the Kool-Aid from Fund for a Better Waterfront. There should be no building east of Sinatra Drive or River Road, and when you look at Hoboken and our waterfront, it's amazing the difference between Jersey City and Weehawken to the north and south. There, they have buildings right on the waterfront, you don't know if it's public land or private land. They often, often it is public land, but they make it look very much like private. But our waterfront is so special, it's so unique, it's so inviting, you don't find it anywhere else. So, I, I, like I said, I drank the Kool-Aid. If there's a way we can get that property and add it to our waterfront, I am all for it.
Great. So, Council President, we got another resident question, and you guys were obviously talking about the middle class before, so they said, "Any thoughts on retaining economic diversity in Hoboken with these issues between the upper, middle, and lower class?"
So, you want to know how we maintain economic diversity? It's not easy. I've seen, I've seen a lot of people, friends, leave. The city has had, had one opportunity to acquire a building and try a CLT out, Community Land Trust. I actually think it would be an amazing thing to do in Hoboken, if the city could start acquiring some buildings and creating their own affordable housing. We have an empty part, we have a surface parking lot, it's not empty, there are cars on it, on the corner of 11th and Willow. That is the worst use of land that you could possibly have for a lot in Hoboken. I think that would be an ideal place to build affordable housing, and it doesn't have, that doesn't have to be the city building it. That can be, you work with a developer, they have to give back X amount of affordable units, which is a law that we've already passed, maybe we have them build something there. We should be looking at spots in Hoboken that we can add affordable housing, and in particular, I feel like most people that are getting displaced are 55 and up. We should be looking into housing for 55s and ups. We don't have anything like that. There's seniors living in homes that they don't want to live in anymore, they were fortunate to buy them years ago, they would much rather be in an, in a home that was, in an apartment that was easier to live in, due to age, but they can't sell their home and move anywhere because there's nowhere for them to go that they would be able to afford. Hoboken really lacks in senior housing, it really lacks in 55 and up housing, and there are, you know, young families that also struggle, but we've, we've made a big push to build three-bedroom, luxury three-bedrooms. I think we need to re, take a new look at that and start thinking about our members of the community that have been here a long time and possibly could be displaced.
Okay. Frank, obviously, a pretty open-ended audience question, what's your take?
As a council member for the Sixth Ward, I would push for an additional 5% increase over the 10% for affordable housing. We might settle for less, we have to negotiate, but it's got to be more than 10%. And I'll give you a perfect example of what public-private partnership is, for me. The Veterans, Veterans Homeless Center that they just built for six units for homeless veterans, that took two years to get to where they are now. The building that's across the street from me got done in eight months. So, if there's some kind of public-private partnership that we could explore, where we could, if a corporation wants to do good, let's say Amazon wants some great PR, let's see if we can come to an agreement with them and see if we can get some affordable housing, not just in, in Hoboken where our focus would be, but maybe this is a national program we could fill out. And just start from there. There has to be some kind of public-private partnership that I'd like to investigate to be able to have funds and get these things built quicker. It shouldn't take two years for veterans to be in a, in a home who are homeless, and a private, well, we know it's profit. One is profit, the other isn't. The other one is to house veterans, the other one is to make money. So, that has to be looked at as well.
Okay. In a similar vein, we have another question from Jane Migliore, and she says, "How will you keep Hoboken's rent protections in place with so many new absentee property owners trying to weaken it?" And Frank, we could start with you this time.
Yeah, I think we should maintain the rent control laws. I'll give you a perfect example, in my opinion. If you look on Washington Street, you know, we have a Sephora now, and I'm sure the landlord's making some good money on the rent, or I'm not sure what the details of that are, but does Hoboken need a Sephora? I mean, seriously, I think it's just a giant advertising venue for them. If one person never went to that store, they would still make money. I can't see them losing money. I mean, maybe it's kind of a bit hyperbole, but, really, does, does Hoboken need a Sephora? It needs more small business, they've got the special business district going now that's, that's going to hopefully remedy some of that stuff, there's too many closed storefronts. In fact, I don't recall seeing that many storefronts closed since I've been here. I don't recall, anyway. But that's, to me, that's an example.
Okay, very good. Council President, your thoughts?
Keep me as your councilperson. This is, that's how you stop it. Before I was elected the first time, I never gave, it just was never on my radar, what certain landlords were doing to their tenants, and I was quickly amazed by how many people were getting displaced by landlords that weren't forthcoming with the tenants' rights. And I'm quite confident that I have kept more tenants in their apartments, not just in the Sixth Ward, but citywide, than any other councilperson ever. I know the rent control law inside and out, I've had the privilege of lots of people giving me lots of information on it over the years. I actually went to an open house four years, I think it was about four years ago, because it, it just was so odd. It was a two-bedroom apartment, very large, on Bloomfield Street for, I think the price was somewhere around $300,000, and I'm like, okay, something's going on here. I went in, there was a line to get in, when everyone left, I went to the woman in the kitchen, and I said, "Oh, are you the realtor?" And she said, "No, actually, I live here, and everyone's coming in here, like, they're going to take, they're moving into my apartment, and they're moving walls, and they're redecorating while they're walking around the apartment that I live in." And her husband was sitting on the couch, and a child was also sitting on the, teenager was also sitting on the couch, and I said, "Well, do you know your rights?" And, believe it or not, someone did buy the apartment, tried to evict her illegally. I went through all her rights, I contacted the DCA to talk about condo conversions, and now that woman is the proud owner of her apartment, because I put so much time and effort, and I find it, it's like, it's heartbreaking for me to see this happening to people. Can I give one more?
Yeah, all right.
Years ago, there was a, I was looking at the, the rent levelling board agenda, and there was a hardship increase that was more than doubling the person's rent, and I'm like, okay, something's up with this. It was not in the Sixth Ward, so I went to that person's apartment. The person was very sick, an older man, very sick, and didn't speak English, unfortunately, I don't speak Spanish, but he got his sister on the phone, and she, her, her brother was not doing well, and I told her exactly what she needed to do, what her rights were, what his rights were, and exactly what they needed to do when they go before the rent levelling board, and they did, and he got zero, excuse me, he got zero hardship. So, maybe I should be the tenant advocate for Hoboken.
All right. Well said. Frank, it was a pretty long answer, did you want to add anything?
For those two examples, she gave kudos.
Okay.
That's fine, that's what we need. If she's done that before, that's good, I'll do the same thing. I've been a tenant advocate for a long time. I've been under the radar for 40 years, but I've supported, I've been in town, I've supported several candidates, voted in every election, so I've been pretty involved, I figured it was time to step out from under the radar.
Got it.
See what we can accomplish for the town.
All right, understood. So, let me circle back to election decorum for a moment, this is a fun topic, of course, but some people that support Mayor Balla and his candidates have said that this whole bad blood, and this whole, you know, infighting, face punching, whatever you want to call it, stems from the 2017 mayoral contest when the reform, quote-unquote, split. So, I've heard this a number of times, I know you both heard it a number of times, just where do you guys stand on this perspective? We could start with you, Frank.
Yeah, this is, to me, it's simple, I mean, county politics will always be county politics, we can try to change that. I'm not sure how fast or how quick, or if it'll change at all, but personally, I'll work with anyone, at any time, at any place, that will better the city of Hoboken, period.
Okay. Council President?
I think if you just look at how I ran my campaign in 2017, it speaks for itself. I run clean campaigns, I don't throw mud at other people, not my style, no interest in doing it. I'm the one who has to look at myself in the mirror when I wake up in the morning, and I want to like the person I look at. So, I am going to run a clean campaign, just like I always do.
All right. Did either of you ever consider, or entertained, or even perhaps dreamed of the possibility of running on Mayor Balla's ticket, and why or why not? Frank?
I've never really considered the possibility of running on Balla's campaign, or for, you know, for the council. I don't dislike Robbie, I don't like him one way or another, I think, you know, some of his policies are okay, some of his policies are horrible. And again, I'll work with anyone, anytime, anyplace, if it's for the benefit of the city of Hoboken, period.
All right. Well said. Jen?
I did consider it. I met with someone from his campaign and discussed it, I wish I could remember, I think it was like a week before they announced their slate. But no, I definitely considered it, I was thinking about what would be best for the city moving forward, and ultimately, I thought not being on the slate would be best for the city moving forward.
Why'd you think that?
I think people are enjoying me being independent. I think that people feel that, you know, I ask the questions that need to be asked, I look, I look at everything, you know, with a fine-tooth comb, if I see something that doesn't seem right, I, I openly speak about it, and I think that's what people really want from who's ever representing them in City Hall.
Okay, very good. And we had another question on here from one of our Facebook viewers, and they wanted to know how the city plans on paying for the legal expenses that are going to come along with Union Dry Dock, specifically related to this eminent domain proceeding, so if you guys have any thoughts on that, and we could start with Jen this time.
Oh, me first?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry. I was distracted over there.
It's okay. It's okay.
The legal expenses aren't going to be the issue. It will be building out the park once we acquire it, that's going to be the issue. But the legal expenses are not astronomical.
All right, simple enough. Frank?
No, same thing. Again, I mentioned before, if you want to go back a little bit, it's the possible remediation aspect of what we find. You know, it was a steel yard and so I'm not sure what we're going to find there, but that could balloon and that might be interesting to watch how that balloons on the cost side.
All right. And then something that's maybe a little bit random, but just curious if you guys have any favorites in the Board of Education race, which is also November 5th, obviously not quite as entertaining as this one, but nevertheless, at the ballot at the same time, curious if you guys are backing any candidates and why or why not?
I'm not backing any candidates on the board right now. Not that I want to recuse myself, it's, I'm a co-founder of a charter school in Hoboken, Elysian Charter School, to be exact. And, you know, we got chartered in '96, opened up in '97, so we've been around for quite a while. I've served on the board two elected terms for that school. Again, I'm not supporting anyone. I just hope who is ever elected really takes the costs and the benefits for the kids. It's all about the kids and if they worry about that and they focus on that, we'll be okay. But I'm not supporting anyone at this point.
All right, quite clear. Council President?
I'm not endorsing anyone and I actually think we have a lot of great people running for the Board of Ed this year.
Okay, simple. So other than that, I'll leave, I'll throw one out to you guys that's extremely open-ended. Just what do you think is something that we haven't talked about today, it's something that hasn't really been spoken on the campaign trail, that you wanted to get out to the voters before November 5th as it specifically pertains to the Sixth Ward? We could start with Frank.
Again, I always hearken back to quality of life issues. I know there's a lot of talk about the scooters, there's a lot of talk about bike lanes, protected bike lanes, to be exact. I'll refer to Observer Highway, which actually had a protected bike lane, there was a curb cut and cars were parked inside. Now, you could have had a bike lane and possible walk lane already next to the fence by the rail yard. I mean, the size of that walkway and the bike lane is the Autobahn. It doesn't have to be that wide. And now we just have one lane access and egress, Jersey City and Hoboken. There's always traffic, maybe not at 2:00 in the morning, but the design is not as good as, I was opposed to it at the time and the design is not as good as I feel as it should be. Again, there was a protected barrier, the cars were parked inside if you're coming down towards the, towards the east side, towards Lackawanna. So that whole thing was taken apart, they've got a bike lane and a walkway that's about, again, the size of the Autobahn. You've got one lanes, you've got the turnoff lanes, it's, it could have been much, much better. And when you do the protected bike lanes, I think Jen had mentioned it, too, you got to be careful, you got to take the neighborhood and the width into consideration. I mean, I think I got a notification from the mayor, I get these little emails, they were comparing the protected bike lanes in 9th Avenue in New York to a square-mile city. That's preposterous. New York City, 9th Avenue, Washington Street, Clinton Street, Willow Street, stop.
There may be a few differences, depending who you ask.
A few differences, John. Come on.
But Council President, what do you think?
I think for the Sixth Ward, what's important is someone who, you know, walks the walk. And I do, I walk the walk. And I said it before, the Sixth Ward is a village. That's why, the Sixth Ward to me is what, like, everyone should have the privilege of living in a place like the Sixth Ward. I love the community there, as I talked about before, I love the relationship when you're walking down the street and someone's sitting on their stoop and you can start to have a conversation with them. It's actually one of the issues I do have with scooters. I'm concerned that it's taking away people's contact with one another because Hoboken is such a great walking city. But for the Sixth Ward, everything, everything's about quality of life. And quality of life isn't just potholes, it isn't just scooters. Like I said, it's development, it's responsible development, it's really looking into the North End and L Corps and what can the city handle, what kind of development can they handle there, what kind of development do we not want to see there? And can I, L Corps plan, I just thought of it right now, but in the original one, we had the commercial right next to the rail yards and the residential in the back, they've somehow managed to swap that out and we all know what that's about, so.
What's that about?
Money, it's all about money.
So there aren't a ton of endorsements in this race. Of course, the mayor has backed a team, as everybody knows, but besides that, I mean, really not many endorsements at all. One that just came to light recently was Local 825 made an endorsement of six candidates, it was actually last week, but just came out yesterday. So just curious on what you guys thought about the labor union throwing their endorsement into this race. Council President?
We've all seen what the labor union does when you go against them. There'll be commercials all over the place about you. But I don't understand why they would be endorsing five candidates, five candidates that have never been elected before. I don't even know if they had a conversation with them, but I don't really want to look into the weeds too much on it. We know what they did in the last campaign, this is stronger foundations. I wouldn't want their endorsement.
And Frank?
Yeah, I'm not too worried about the 825 endorsement. You know, when you have a lot of money, there's various ways, in fact, there's a myriad of ways to put the word out for your candidates. I don't think it's any different than perhaps Jen or I or any other candidate just walking the streets. Same words, getting them out, no endorsement from 825. The people will make their choice.
Okay, got it. All right, and believe it or not, we are now at our closing statement, so you guys have about a minute each to just sign off and then we're going to call it a day. So Frank, please, please get us started.
Sure. Again, I was 40, I'm a 40-year resident in Hoboken, co-founder of a charter school. I've been under the radar for 40 years since I've been here, but I have supported several candidates throughout the years. I've been involved actively, as you can tell. I think it's time to step out from under the radar. I want to win this thing. I want to serve the Sixth Ward residents and I want to serve the city as well. You've got the micro and then the macro. And there's really, I mean, there's the difference between Jen and I, I think, is the approach we'll have. I don't have, you know, some qualms with what she's saying and I agree with her on many cases, but I think it's the way we're going to approach the unification of the city, which is I really, I'm absolutely desirous of that. I think it'll make things easier, it'll make things go much better. That's it.
All right, very good, Frank. Two seconds to spare. Council President?
Like I said, there are people that talk the talk, there are people that walk the walk. I'm a walker. I will commit, I am committed to walking for you for another term. My priority has always been the people of the Sixth Ward and making sure if you have an issue, it gets solved. I will continue to do that for our amazing town and that's why you should vote for Jen again.
Oh, clever rhyming, yeah, it's good stuff. All right, so ladies and gentlemen, thanks for tuning in. We appreciate your continued support. This is the Hudson Media Group Live Debate Series for the Hoboken City Council Race, excuse me. I will be a part of the Moderation for the Quality of Life Coalition on October 22nd and October 24th, so we hope you'll join us then, but we will be back in studio next week. So thanks for tuning in, we'll see you soon. Have a fantastic week.
And thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
You're welcome.